Need to order. Um, let's stand for the pleasure of the meetings.
Oh.
I have one of these. About the revolutions. And we're small, but literally. Name? Do we have any acknowledgements, Dr. Will?
We do indeed. So um. We have the uh, I have the honor today of acknowledging the young adults who have provided the artwork and the photography work for around the. The conference room here. And so I'm gonna try my best not to to uh murder the names, but Sarah Matheson, Suray for Court Young, Lily Gooding, Lacy Bootman, Ava Pagan, Paul Brown, Cecilia Pryor, Danielle Lewis, Melissa Hemingway, Madison Land, Eva Wilson, Tyler Hollenbeck, Lily Shaw, even Prescott, Isabel De Milo, and Kylie Soudell. And I think that's they they don't have them all up yet, but in this next month, they're gonna have all of their work done. So just an acknowledgement, if you would like to see these wonderful young artists' work, it's all going to be circling their.
Yeah, it's awesome. Great. Well, congratulations to all those that got their artwork featured. Um. How about the approval of the agenda?
I'd be so moved.
Thank you. Want to do a uh, we don't need to roll call vote, let's just all vote.
Hi.
Hi. You guys are gonna, any names? You guys are all gonna have to go easy on me. Attended how many board meetings, but it's amazing. I'm really on autopilot, just following Ashley's directions uh when it comes to the voting and on the items we vote on, so you guys.
As long as we don't have anybody participating via Zoom.
Oh. Okay. For Tony, and I'm looking to, I'm logged on, so I'm trying to keep track of myself, but definitely shout out, help me out. How about a motion for the approval of the September twenty eighth minutes?
So.
You have a vote in second?
Let's vote.
Aye.
Any names? This? Hey. That's will it. We're ready to move on to public participation, which we have no uh.
Uh, one.
You know, no one live, but we do have one individual in the um virtual meeting. Does anybody want to interhand up? Okay, all right, we can close that out. Jacob, how about some correspondence?
It's very easy today.
Okay.
Received no correspondence, this is the last meeting. So it's first time. Yeah. Oh, it's that's.
I believe you, but it does feel like wow.
We're doing the K D now.
Yeah.
Right?
We're going along.
Thank you, Jenny. That was excellent. How about some points of information? Does anybody have anything they'd like to talk about? Me?
Yeah, I just wanna give uh give a little credit to Mr. Swanson and the Bird Grove. We attended my daughter's first grade with the curriculum writer. And I think they did absolutely an amazing job of keeping things moving. And the teachers did a great job of explaining and that, you know, I left there just energized and excited for what Victoria is gonna learn this year. So I wanted thank everybody that participated in that. It went well.
That's awesome. And I'm happy to hear about it, too. Anyone else? No? Okay. We're ready for our student representatives' report.
Okay. Sorry. Okay, to start off, um, all sports are starting to come to an end. I know cross country yesterday had their senior night, and I know girls soccer is having theirs today. Volleyball, I believe, is on the twenty seven, and I'm not sure about boys volleyball, but all post sports are starting to come to an end.
Okay, uh, PSATs happened today. They were lovely. I was gonna wear my grout fit from PSATs, but I decided against it. Um, and yeah, there were some fun stories. There's some not fun math. The Jane Austen one was great. Um, and yeah, PSATs went really well. I looked um on the minutes from last meeting, and apparently unless I didn't operate it right, our district has been doing pretty good with test scores. So I think that this will add on to that.
Okay, and then uh pep rally, we're gonna uh, last year, we didn't have a pep rally, and I think the year prior, we didn't have a pep rally due to uh riots and controversy, uh that everything during a freshman. But this year, we're going to rebrand it and call it the Eagle Rally. So we're gonna make it more of a safer environment for freshmen in all the grades. And we're gonna make it so that everyone feels included. And during the pep rally, usually it's for the football team, but we also want to acknowledge the clubs that have been working super hard or like the other sports teams. So we're gonna have uh moments at the pep rally where uh heads of different clubs and different sports can stand up and be acknowledged for their hard work.
Um, and going off of the pep rally, the humcom theme has finally been decided. It is what everyone in the world wanted, Hollywood. Uh, I'm extremely excited. Okay, and going off of coming, spirit week. So we actually finalized our spirit weekday like four hours ago. Um, so on Monday, it is breast cancer awareness day. Uh, I think we decided to do that because the volleyball team is feeling a pink out.
Yes.
Um, so everyone's gonna wear pink. And then on Tuesday, it's America Day. Red, white, and blue, we always have an America Day, it's kind of a staple. Um, on Wednesday, it's Twin Day, gonna be very exciting, it always is. On Thursday, it is Eagle Spirit Day, which is going off with the pep rally. Again, it's mostly just red, white, and blue, but it's uh more so an opportunity to show off your eagle merch, to show off your eagle spirit. Um, and then Friday, this is the one that we had a lot of deliberation on. We are doing Celebrity Day. We're going to dress up as celebrities, and if the people going as pit bull. Um, so that's gonna be really.
Don't know what else yet.
Uh, yeah, so we're going as. So we're going as pit bull. Um, I'm gonna do something, it's gonna be great, but uh Celebrity Day is going to be very, very exciting.
And then to go into further detail about the Eagle Spirit Day, so in years prior, um, Jane, you may know that usually it's freshmen were yellow, sophomores were white, uh juniors were red, and seniors were blue. But uh freshmen have overall felt discluded, so instead we're rebranding it so they feel more include um includes by doing uh freshmen and sophomores wear white, and juniors were red, and seniors were blue. So, because we know freshmen's uh yellow is not a school color, so we want to make the freshmen to be included, so we're gonna make them wear white as well.
But yellow was always impossible to find.
Yeah.
Yeah, I buy.
And uh just adding on to that, Mr. Pullins was at our meeting today. Uh, and I'm pretty sure what the school is trying to do like in years prior, making uh freshmen, sophomores, and juniors all wear white, and the stuff in the seniors, excuse me, the seniors wear blue. Uh, cause red is also not a school color, even though it's on medicine.
Yeah.
But yeah.
And I know people are against this, but like this change is good because we all want to be included. We're all working under the same environment, and we're all Eagles.
And that's it. If anyone has any questions or comments, yeah, future.
Great job, as always. No, that's awesome, you guys. That's really great, and I appreciate you doing inclusivity. Sorry, you know, it's tough being a freshman, right? It's tough going into that new environment and welcoming them and making sure that everything feels okay. So that's awesome.
I don't look good in yellow.
Yeah, I don't, yeah.
It's not a reason.
Red colors, right?
Doesn't look good on my. Doesn't look good on me.
And now they're gonna pretend to be sophomores.
Exactly. See, that's where the controversy comes, but in the end, I I think it's gonna bring us all together.
Yeah, that's a big gap as we practice.
In a crazy gap.
Crazy. There you go. Hey, any other comments for the student representatives? Nope. All right, we made a link and move on to the superintendent report.
So as you uh, as you know, first meeting of the month has the monthly financial report for the previous month. In this case, we are talking about September. Overall, the budget ended with a balance of two million seventy three oh forty two, four point nine seven of the board's current budget. You know, as you know, we're still really at the beginning of the year, so do a couple of the highlights and then um, you know, take down those and try to get you any information you need either now or afterwards. Um, salaries are currently under budget by about twenty five thousand. More in line this year with, you know, what we'd be normally doing. Um, we're seeing it be more like a normal year, which is uh, which is great. Substitutes available balance at this time of year is not going to be, is is going to be pretty big, so we have an average of two ninety one. Um, you know, we we have BD during the year, subterused for that, subs are obviously used for illness, and then all the other things, so expect that to go down. Uh, overtime cannot be encumbered, currently under one sixty five, again, beginning of the year. Stipends, as we talked about before, you know, pay to play, that's always gonna be a bit under, um, and it's gonna fluctuate as we collect funds and so on throughout the year. Health insurance severance and play benefits, which code one ninety, two hundred to ten, and collectively um, one ninety nine, under budget at this time, again, beginning of the year. Hired employees, newly hired employees, and retired employees, as you might imagine, we're having big retirements at this moment, they've got um, so currently under course reimbursement unemployment, two quotes, two forty, two fifty, two sixty. These are under budget, and most of these things in September would be under budget. Um, benefits consultants, workers comp, same thing, uh, under budget by sixty one, Eagle Tech audit, this lines three forty, three fifty, also under it is September, repair, maintenance, custodial cleaning, et cetera, votes for twenty four thirty. You know, again, these are all gonna be in a normal position for September. Transportation under by uh three fifty two, the routes haven't all been, you know, uh. They haven't all impacted us yet through a piece of special ed routes and other things that appear to zone, special tuition. Um, this is over, um, but that's also because we don't get our grants, you know, till later, so we commit all the funds, and then we get the grants. The excess cost grants, as you may recall, come in February and May, and that's when that starts to bounce back again, but you will see, you know, it go a bit over as we have to encumber what um, you know, what our programming entails. Uh, energy, all the funds were moved to the Yusuf account. And that's, you know, it happens at the beginning of each year. Textbooks are under, as you might expect, uh, E six K instructional supplies and so on. Six six hundred, six ten, six ninety, seven thirty are collectively under by two twenty nine, because again, beginning of the year. So you're not gonna see a tremendous amount of activity at this point. And. That's a basic sign.
Does anybody have any comments or questions? Regarding the monthly financial report? Nope. Thank you, Dr. Will. Move on to the indoor air quality grant.
All right, so indoor air quality grant, um. The September twenty eighth Board of Agenda item included documentation for a capital request, and part of it had a T I S and T M S H back edition. And so. You know, these were requested for a couple of reasons. Um, we do have a temperature control in it with respect to children and so on. Uh, but the most recent addition to consider is the indoor air quality bill four twenty three. Um, and it was attached in the last, in the attachments for the twenty eighth, um, as it was first talked about then. Uh, and so it was also reviewed by the Finance and Facilities Committee in August. But what's happened subsequent to that time is the grant option was further articulated. And it turns out that Talon could get a forty nine point six four percent reimbursement rate on the project pending acceptance. The catch is the timeline is incredibly short. So in order to be eligible for this, um, and it would be about a seven hundred and forty four thousand, six hundred dollar reimbursement on a one point five million dollar project. Um, you have to do it a certain way, which pushes up the price a bit. Um, but you also have to get it, you have to make a commitment by December first. Um, now the town, I'm talking at the town on it, the commitment doesn't have to be a referendum. There's another way that they can achieve it called non-referendum debt. That's the possible funding method they can use. So that, you know, that'll give you obviously the differential between the expected grant payment and the amount that would have to be put up for it. But that has to happen prior to December first. Or there has to be a commitment letter saying you will have a referendum or have a source of funding no later than January. So bottom line is it has to happen very quickly. In order to be eligible, excuse me. So. So basically tonight. I have to put this in front of you so that you can talk about it, consider it, and then if you are interested in this, then you would do the motion that I've listed here to support the district's action to apply for the indoor air quality grant and request that the town council approve an appropriation in the amount of one point five million dollars in anticipation of the forty nine point six four percent grant reimbursement. That would allow uh Lisa Hancock then to to take it from there and uh move forward and et cetera, you know, move on to the council side and all of that. Sorry. I'm not a gentleman, but that's.
But I don't wanna leave money on the table, obviously. I do have questions, so uh. One is, like, is this something that might go to priority districts, or are we likely to get, you know, some?
My understanding is we would be likely to get it if if we can make the commitment. The the tough thing is that not a lot of people, not not a lot of districts may be able to make that commitment.
Yeah, I think it's very odd that it has such a tiny window, but that just strikes me as a little weird.
Makes it a bit, yeah.
Uh. The other question is. Oh, uh, are there any other strings attached? You said it pushes up the price a bit. Is there, how much is a bit?
Well, you'll notice that the first request that we made when it was going to capital was one million two hundred twenty five or something. There are other considerations with the budget uh that you have to get, like, um, I think it has to do with asbestos, it has to do with certain other things you have to do compliance activities would push up the price.
Yeah.
Also, it's how you have to then approach the bidding and the uh allocation of the contracts and so on. So you may not use the entire one point five, but when I asked for the figure, that would be this be appropriate figure, I was given one point five in cooperation with the town, because that's the figure that would most likely result in you, you know, having money come back versus, you don't wanna under, you know, go under. You wanna make sure you haven't touched, and that was the amount that was provided to make sure we haven't.
You're saying, then you're saying it'll still be economical, it makes sense, though, even with that pricing.
This definitely makes sense. If you're gonna, if you're gonna do this project, and and I I included again the indoor air quality information for the board, and it's in the packet for the public. There are temperature limits and and stipulations, you know, so we can't, for instance, if um you know, if uh you have a cafeteria where everyone's eating lunch, but somebody has a temperature challenge and now can't eat lunch with their peers, that's a significant issue in terms of equity and so on. And um, now that actually is talking about having to have all areas have a certain um standard. Uh, so it is going to um impact us one way or the other, and getting seven hundred thousand reimbursed is better than.
About half the cost of the project, like you said.
Forty nine point six four percent.
So that's all from me.
Yes. We, I know we talked to this a little bit, Memphis. The uh, great stop for a minute. Uh, when did we have the HVAC? At least estimated, was that?
Twenty twenty five.
Twenty twenty five. So if we did something like this. Would we leave a gap in twenty twenty five, or would we pull projects forward?
Well, this project's already been lifted out of your capital request, because the only, this is the method the town would want, you know, potentially go. So you'll notice that I don't think it was in the last either, because it was transitioning to this possibility. Now, if you don't wanna do this, it can go back.
Well, I guess that's.
But it's the biggest chunk of your.
Still there, so I'm assuming we're gonna take it out, though?
Yeah, is it in the um, it's there in that one?
Whatever one I printed today.
But that that would be coming out.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll put a big X there.
In order to go this direction, which, you know, would be a different.
So what is a non-referendum? I mean, we're, we can get a million and a half without asking permission?
I was told that you have in Talon a non-referendum option. Something in your ordinances and rules that allow you to do that under certain conditions, which I think that I'm, I am told this would apply, should you if the the first step along the way is you saying you want to do that, and if you do with that language and that motion, they carry it the rest of the way and we apply. And if we get it. Then there is that option.
From a requirements perspective, then, it is to to be in compliance with with what the state is is asking us to do. We have to have these in place no later than what?
Um, it's probably in that, let me look. But I would imagine we would need to get right on top of it in the next year or two to get the project done. I'm, I'll look at the timeline, see if I can pull that up again.
That's it.
Well, Dr. Will's pulling that up. Does this pass through the state for sure?
The bill?
The bill. Bill number four two three.
My understanding is that it has, but you know, it has these, um, and it was part of our presentation from shipwrecked good.
Okay, so it's definite.
It's, yeah.
So what was this? So this, when, when is the state requiring then it to be done by? Was that the twenty twenty five?
That's the question, that's what.
That's what, okay, that's what you're looking at, okay.
Yeah, there's a lot of on or before's in here, and so I'm I'm building up to the on or before, but um you have to do an assessment on or before the twenty twenty four, on or before June thirty of twenty twenty six, each local and regional board shall have a in place a heating ventilation, so it has to be on or before.
So they are, so this already passed, so there's no way of getting around it. Um, my concern for December first is, are we gonna have time to go through the bidding process? Um.
Well, you have.
Or or do we have to have, I guess, a specific bid? I noticed you got one from that M Corps company.
Well, then you you have to go back and follow their process, whatever the grant says, so you might have to go back out and do that again, but you have to commit by the.
Okay, so as long as you commit, you don't have to have your vendor. Official, you know, setup and all that, okay, so, I mean, obviously, I don't think there's any reason why we wouldn't want to try to get the seven hundred and forty four thousand. I'm a little concerned, but I just don't trust the state. My only concern would be if somehow this doesn't end up happening. Have we committed to the point where we couldn't take it back? If that makes sense. But I think it's just, it's a risk.
To add in there.
Yeah.
You know, if, even if this was not an option. We've got a requirement to have these HVAC or these, these environmental things in place by twenty twenty six. Uh, so you pull a year, year and a half of installation out of that, you've got the financial part, that's another bit of a year. We've gotta get started now. Uh, so whether we use this or go through the normal capital cycle. Uh, I think if nothing else, this should certainly be an alarm that we've got, it's trained coming, and we gotta get from it.
I think my concern more is that out of the hundred and sixty four districts, a hundred and fifty, let's just say, are gonna fight back against this and say we can't do it, and somehow there's gonna be bill number four twenty five that's going to change the requirements, and we've already committed, so I'm like, can, would we be able to use the seven forty four for whatever the new requirements could be? Because I just, you know, I'm just being pessimistic. I don't see every district being able to come up with one point two million or whatever each district easily to the point where they're all gonna say, sure, you know, you said we have to do it, we'll do it, you know, but I don't know, maybe we, maybe nobody has a choice. So that would be my only concern, but again, I think it's just, I don't think we could take a chance, like, I think we have no choice. I think we're gonna have to do it. I would hope that if the requirements change, that we wouldn't lose the grant. And we could adjust accordingly. But again, I don't have a magic ball to see what is truly gonna happen with this going forward. It seems very rushed on the stage end um without thinking it through, but I think if we learned anything from all of our years on the Board of Ed, I don't think the state thinks a lot through of how it really affects districts. So. That would be my only question, but again, it's kind of a moot point. Yeah, because it seems like we're gonna have to do it the way it's written, and the way it is right now, today is the moment in time, we're gonna have to do it. So might might as well just try and get at the money, get the reimbursement. So, Dr. Will, it should be motion to move this to board action?
That would, we need the next step, and you can make the motion to. If you wanted to.
So. So I make the motion.
Let's all vote.
Aye.
Aye.
I need, oh, oh, yes. Uh, Christina, do you wanna vote on uh moving the indoor air quality grant to board action L six?
Aye.
Yeah. But I think that passes unanimously. So next, we are at the um committee and liaison reports. How about uh negotiations? Jen, are we all done? Anything to report? Well, done as of now, okay. Jacob, how about curriculum? You have anything?
Curriculum hasn't been, it's gonna be the last Wednesday.
Okay. Perfect. Steve? Nope, we're next week, okay? Tony, I think we're next week, too, our, for policy, and uh Jen, vacations?
Uh, end of the month, but I can give a couple of few updates.
Sure.
For Tep To, both the Lyman Pie and Castle fundraiser pickup is eleven ten twenty two at Hertz Row. They have begun planning book fairs for the year, and both schools also have staff appreciation events in October. And they are also bringing back their Frosty Fest, so stay tuned for more information on that. For the boosters, the Eagle Scramble was a great success. There were a hundred and twenty four revolver's participating, and over eighteen thousand dollars was raised, which makes it their most successful year yet. Um, their kitchen closed fundraiser start this month, with the first being ten nineteen at Wellington Pizza. There's also going to be a special pizza that was created by THS students called the Screaming Eagle Pizza. Novembers will be at Camille's, Decembers will be at the Spot. Um, and then I also saw that your books are on sale now for seventy five dollars and can be ordered online, that seniors are reminded to submit their baby pictures. And that the Talon Project Graduation Bottle in Cam Drive is eleven nineteen from nine to one at THS.
You're good. Did I miss any um ratings? Oh, yes, correct, but it'll have.
I just wasn't at the last meeting. Yeah. Um, big news of that is we have uh the survey out now uh for town, so that's gonna be open about a month total, but that's running till, so you've got, you don't have a whole month of that. I think it's gonna be up something in the October, um, so if you'd like to take that.
And where would we find that survey?
Uh, in, it's in our town with.
Yeah.
There's a QR code, someone, I was walking through the building here.
Yeah.
Thought somewhere else, too.
Yeah.
But yeah, I I I'm gonna ultimately post it on our, our thing, too, just.
Yeah, so there's a, I got the barcode, I'll pure begin share it somehow, but um, yeah, there's a barcode for it now with a flyer.
So just something.
Well, it's also posted in the.
Yeah, I thought I'd be supposed to do that.
Well, it was also in the patch.
Sure, yeah. Well, if you're looking for the survey, just reach out to one of your members of the. Pass course.
We'll find it. Yes, um, that's my PSA, that's pretty much it.
Okay. We can move on to the chairperson's report, which there's none today. So on to board action. We've got some obsolete and surplus equipment to talk about with that.
So.
Which is a favorite.
Do you ever, at home, can follow along?
Yeah.
Okay. Obsolete and surplus equipment, uh, as you know, occasionally we'll be requesting that things get transferred as per policy thirty forty. To dispose of our obsolete surplus or other materials. A THS Hamada Offset Printing Press Model V S thirty four. L two K in the graphics room is obsolete, the offset press is expensive to operate. It is very difficult to maintain and machine is no longer working. As designed in the jobs it performs can much more efficiently be done with our printers. So this is a huge paperweight and they'd like to move it on and perhaps the town can scrap it for metal or something like that. Um, and so as as per the process, we would put it in front of the board to ask you to declare. The item listed in L one of the October twelve twenty twenty two meeting as obsolete, return it over to the town in accordance with the policy.
I'll move to declare the items listed in item L one of the October twelve twenty twenty two. Viewing meeting as obsolete, turn the items over to town in accordance with the Board of Education policy thirty four.
Any discussion? Although I'm curious to know how old that machine is.
Well, the fact that it's called a printing press.
That's what they want to ask. All right, well, why don't we vote?
I just, I had. I think of this, could be given to the um, historical society or something. If it if it relates in that regard, I don't know exactly the machine that it is, but that's the first thing that came up, I don't, but. The town can.
Yeah.
Oh, I see, I got you.
Any names? Oh, oh, Chris, I'm sorry, I'm so sorry. How about the healthy food certification?
So healthy food certification, it is not deja vu, we did have this before. Um, and so what happens is occasionally they'll make a tweak. And then to make sure that there's no chance that we would not be reimbursed for this, we then will make that tweak in language too. So this is re-presented, um, I talked with Abby Casman Harnett, who's our food service director, there was something that they needed to tweak. And so they tweaked it, this language represents the change. Um, and so the motion tonight is taking in and voting, or they're making sure that we vote to incorporate. Considerations one, two, and three. And that uh, you allow me as superintendent to authorize the healthy food certification and allow for those exceptions that are listed here. And essentially, it's one, two, three. So if you vote to do that, then we are able to get the reimbursements. Um, the last normal year we had prior was about fourteen thousand dollars in reimbursement. This is a little weird of a year because, you know, as you know, there's subsidy making most of the meals. Um, at no cost for for people. However, there will be some as we get in segue to paying for these again, that we would be getting reimbursements on, so we want to make sure we.
Any questions or discussions for Dr. Will?
So just, just a question there, Dr. Will, on what you're saying, if I look through. One, two, and three. They all specifically talk about the healthy foods as far as it relates to. Meals and food products offered for sale to students. Does that also apply to what essentially being given to them?
Um, the question, right now, it, what if you're handing it out during times when food is being served? So like you can't, if students couldn't buy a bunch of Domino's Pizza and distribute it every day during lunch waves. Or certain things, does that would be something that would uh, would be contrary to this? But they can do it after school or outside of hours anytime they want. So even if there's no cost, there are certain things you cannot do during the day.
Based on this or based on another?
Based on the Healthy Foods Initiative that you have to adhere to do this, it kind of connects, so. You know, that that's the thing, you know, so sometimes uh, people will say, well, why can't we just have a. You know, this kind of thing during school day, well, you can't because of this reason. Uh, for the healthy foods piece, if you're going to get the reimbursement, you have to comply with that, and then so by.
By approving the motion as written here. It relates to the three, which then tie back to the Healthy Foods Initiative, the the. Is that link written or is that just understood?
It's just, it makes reference to it.
It does.
Yeah, well, this here.
I'm trying, the Healthy Foods Initiative, that that. My question is, is it written in here that that relates to the Healthy Foods Initiative or is it?
And really, it's the, it's the healthy food certification. People call it initiative for that one time, it was. It it refers to the healthy food certification to get it, you have to comply with their. With their uh, rules. And it does have reference to the the law, you know, CGS ten twenty one five F. And there's nutrition standards that go with the.
But those relate, yeah, even if we're not.
They have, yes, they're very. This has been hard to hate me to say that they're unexciting, but they are, they're wonderfully exciting from a nutritional point of view. Lots of great nutritional things in there.
Make sure that it's wonderful on the poster.
Right, yeah, no Coke machines, no uh. Those are an artifact of our time.
And we did enjoy this.
I know this isn't totally this, but nobody really saw that young fourth grade student that uh. Got the vegetarian option, vegan option put on T I S. And so, yeah, it was really cool, just a couple of weeks ago. Worked on that, that's pretty fantastic, like we're talking. Amazing fourth grade.
Yeah. Well, any other questions for Dr. Willet about the healthy food certification?
Uh, motion to allow superintendent to support and authorize the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three healthy foods certification. And to allow for the exemption of food and beverage items as well as other provisions as indicated. Considerations one, two, and three.
Okay, so that passes unanimously. On to on high school boiler. And I think when I sent you guys the agenda, I called it the boiler. By the way. Yeah, boiler composition.
So this item basically, um. It had a couple of iterations to it, there was a meeting last night, and I sent some information to the board, um. To kind of update you this afternoon, it kind of took some unintended directions and, you know, things to try to get to a point of uh, resolution. Um, the short version is that the council last night put it five to two to allow the use of the U I S F fund for this. Um, but a little bit of history on it. I don't know if you had a chance to read what I put out, but I will try to just kind of give a summary that is so. You know, more, a little bit more expansive than that, um, because this was the original communication, you know, between us and town to consider things, but um. You know, the the longer story, which I'll try not to make too long. Is that um, boiler number three at the high school experienced problems um, in the fall of twenty twenty one, which is. Uh, October eighteen twenty two, um, period of time. And so when it started to experience its issues, it was shut down. And, you know, I went through and checked with Pete on this and tried to make sure I had everything right. Um, from October to November, it was cut down, from end of October to early November was shut down, they removed the insulation, they removed the exterior. Um, whole process to try to figure out what was going on with it, and in turn that it had cracks. Uh, from December to all the way through August, attempts were made to get information from. Um, the supply houses for the availability of materials and quotes to determine what the impact would be in cost and time to repair it. Um, the manufacturer could not give the supplier information because the manufacturer could not get any information. With respect to its own supply chain, so that cascaded. Um, and so it took a very long time to get the actual quote. Um, of what this would take to repair, the official quote came in on August eighteenth, twenty twenty two. For um, repair and replacement options. Um, when that came in, a second quote was obtained by September ninth, uh, twenty twenty two, so it took that time to get. These quotes for um, for repair and replacement. The submission to insurance at that time was considered because this was looked at as the failure of a a a unit that. You know, ultimately you could go to your insurance for. Um, and so that was the first approach for this, which is why it really wasn't looked at as a capital project, it was something that broke, had a high cost. And we'd go to insurance to repair. Um, when that was talked about, um, there was a conversation as that was explored that if you do that. Once um, you have the numbers, you know, you can do it, but that would impact the clean claims rate that we get. And we have a very good rate right now because we don't have a lot of, you know, things like this happening, and we're not putting a lot of things like that in. So we've actually been able to achieve this clean claims rate. And the funds recovered would actually be provided on a greatly devalued unit. So we would be getting back, you know, if we got something, we would have potentially affect that rating, what we pay more over time, and you're not getting full cost of the unit. You're getting some fraction of it, which would require some other amount to be allocated anyway. So when that was discussed, um, it was brought up that. Um, you know, a submission to insurance might might have it some perils here. Uh, and the installer of the unit had been out of business for many years at this point, so we couldn't go back to the installer of the unit. Um, for any rescue from it either. THS boilers number one and two are expected to last another seven to nine years, and so. At the time, it was known that they could sustain the necessary environmental conditions. Um, it wasn't seen as an emergency, but it certainly was seen as something that, you know, needed to get resolved. Um, because, you know, if you had another complete failure, which was unlikely, but if it happened, then you'd have trouble sustaining your temperatures in the building. So as the concerns or insurance were raised, the option of the U I S F fund was mentioned by a town official as a possible alternative to the situation. And when that came up, um, shifting from insurance, which is again why it wasn't on any of the capital pieces, because that was where the route was going. That's when I started reaching out because it became, you know, an allocation of that fund. And so I sent Ms. Griffin a uh, email when that happened, and then I reached out to the um, board leadership, I think the next day. Um, ultimately, we got it on the um, agenda planning meeting so that, you know, it could get in front of Tom. The board, um, the email that I sent to Ms. Griffin on the fourth said that I'd like to try to get it on the F F C agenda, I think I said the twenty first, it was the nineteenth. Um, but it was the next F F C. And um. And so trying to get those, you know, those mechanisms in motion so that if we were able to use that, then we could transfer this money from this uh, B O E. Uh, filtration, I'm sorry, not B O E boiler filtration system that, you know, isn't. Isn't as important as the boiler itself to the boiler itself. So um, ultimately, you know, we were able to start to move that forward. During that time, when I was sort of sending those emails out a bunch in 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 trying to get those things set up so that. Um, we could get you guys in a position to make a motion if you wanted to do it. Uh, I was informed that this needed to go to the council immediately. Um, I did express some trepidation because the path that I normally would kind of expect here would be coming here and then there. But that there was something about the timeline that, you know, that made that extremely important. Um, and so, you know, I guess part of the rationale was if the council's gonna, was going to say no to the U I S F use. Then when it was brought to the board, you really only had choices, you would either be go through insurance and risk that changing the rate and all that. Or putting it in the capital request that you're literally approving tonight. So I guess the timeline was looked at as if you're not going to be able to use use of, it would be better if you, you know, knew that prior to having to make that capital request. And or, you know, make this something that we just ended up going to insurance for. So that's how that kind of all unfolded, um, and I think, um. I I wasn't fully, you know, expecting to to go last night, but then, no. It seemed like that would be a good idea when I reached out, and so Pete and I attended virtually. Um, and so the day of the T C, you know, meeting, there was a feeling, well, you know, can you come, would that be a good idea, and I just felt that it was. So in the meeting, um, as I said, it was supported by a five to two vote, but there were concerns expressed by some town council members. Regarding the timing, for instance, AKA, why was this presented only now, the problems were experienced in October, and questions about replacement versus repair. So that's why I wanted to give you sort of the full scope of it, you know, when this first came up, it didn't seem like. It really seemed like, okay, can't do insurance, there's this option of use of, and here's this way to go. Um, you know, that night, there were quite a few questions about the time, which I didn't expect because. That there wasn't where our minds was on it, it was an insurance thing fired to this, you know, potentially, so that's kind of, you know, approaching it. That was sort of something that uh, had been fully anticipated um, from a narrative standpoint. But really why it came up, if, you know, when it did, is the functioning boilers were estimated to last to seven, you know, another seven to nine years. And that's why they're not on capital insurance for this one. Uh, it was the first thought, uh, the functioning boilers can sustain it minute, you know, environmental conditions, the supply chain and material challenges. Delayed acquisition of um, the needed quotes invitation, information and materials. It was originally considered considered an insurance item, and the use of the U I S F fund was mentioned as maybe a way to get out of that in. Late August, early October, which is when I reached out to everybody on that. So. You know, uh, the boilers hadn't expected remaining life beyond the current capital cycle. Uh, seven to nine years, so again, that's why they're not in there, and the replacement cost is more than three times as much as the repair cost. So the controls are kind of an add-on to it, but roughly sixty thousand for replacement. I'm sorry, rushed, roughly sixty thousand for repair, it's a hundred and eighty eight to two hundred and seven thousand for replacement, so that's about three times more. The repair can happen more rapidly, it's about four weeks versus about four months, to give a perspective. Um, and this kind of repairs typically something you you may be put to insurance, but. Um, one of the issues with replacing one unit is it puts it out of the cycle of the other units. So if if you replace just one. And then nine years from now, you're replacing the other two. You might have to, you know, first of all, there might not be as much of a cost effective purchase if you buy. You know, and you can buy them all together, you might get a better purchase, there also might be engineering considerations. Because it may not be the same model, you might have to have different models, they might have to have additionally different kinds of uh, engineering pieces to it. So it was looked at more as a repair than full replacement, so that was, those are the answers to. You know, why the timing and generally why it's repair versus replace. Now, having said that, they voted five to two to provide you the U I S F fund, so. The thing I was going to ask you to do, they did. Um, so I would still ask you to do it to authorize, you know, to have you authorize it too. But they have already, they have said that they're within five of them said that, I'm sorry.
No, don't be sorry, I have to um, excuse myself, I've come straight from school to volleyball practice to here. And I need to shower. But thank you so much, thank you, board, thank you, Dr. Willet.
I'm staying because I want to procrastinate my marketing homework, so.
Do you have any questions for Dr. Willet about the THS? I have so many, so maybe I'll go laugh and see what everybody else has.
I'm curious about the, the insurance conversation. Uh, and currently where it's air unusually. Uh, but I want to understand, we we've got this insurance to be able to pay for. These repairs or replacements for these critical units. Why are we, why do we pay for the insurance we don't want to use?
Well, I mean, that my layperson's understanding of this is like when I had a five cent nut go in my house. Well, I mean, my layperson's understanding of this is like when I had a five cent nut go in my house, it was seventy thousand dollars damage.
Right.
And then my insurance went up for the next three years after that. And I think it's a similar model in that we have an excellent rate right now because we don't really have a lot, a lot of large claims. If there's another option for doing this, it saves you that rate out into the future and and now as well. So I think that was originally where people were going with this. The option of use of came up as a helpful, helpful suggestion. And that's how that, you know, that looked. Hey, you've got this thing. There's no point in having filters if your boiler is dead. Why don't you get, you know, boiler with that? And that was, or repair the boiler with that, and that's how that kind of came up.
I guess, I mean, I'm just concerned, you know, we just twenty minutes ago, we voted to ask for a million and a half. And and we're, we we know that we've got bills coming down the pipeline. So when these critical half two items come up, you know, we've talked before about having to get creative as far as who the coming comes from and making sure that we're 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 not just breaking the bank now. So, yeah. I said, I'm a little check, I think.
Well, your benefit for use of this, it it literally was designed for things.
But if and I'm not saying we are, but I'm trying to articulate this best. If we're concerned that our clean rate stays clean, then we're not going to use that insurance when we probably should. In this case, there's an alternate. But the next one, because, you know, you said these next two boilers have between a seven and a nine year life. But had we, had we asked probably three years ago, then we would have been both of them two had an expected life about the same as well as one time three. So are we looking at the two remaining ones? Do we have somebody coming in and really giving them a look over to see that boiler three isn't one crack hidden underneath the insulation?
I think that's always the the fear is the crystal ball, really. What could happen? And and most of the time, these units, they rust out from the inside. You know, so the heat and the minerals and all that. But the way I, the way I I see also using a layperson's perspective, you know, if your, your child bumps your car into another car, you might pay the repair on that a thousand dollars to avoid that going to your insurance because you can afford the thousand, but if you put that into your insurance with your kid who's less than twenty-five years old, you're going to pay rates now for the next three years that are much, much, much higher. And I think, you know, when it's a certain amount of money, it may, you know, it may make sense. When it goes over a certain amount, it may not. And I think that was the thought is, hey, you know, rather than do it this way, you have this UISF fund, it's set up for this purpose. You contribute to it with your energy money. When we transfer that energy money over at the beginning of the year, any that's not expended goes into the use of account for the purpose specifically, I think at one point, these kinds of boilers and things were mentioned as a use. So that was a helpful, you know, hey, why don't you do that?
But by spending this money, by spending this sixty K on the use of one, if I heard you right, it's we will not be spending it on the the water system. Which, I think it was in FFC when when Pete came in and was talking about, I thought that water system was something that is important as well. Are we saying here that we can do without?
Well, you had, when you used to be with tolerant water, now this is going back, and I'm not criticizing any group or anything. My understanding is when Connecticut Water took over, it helped a lot under systems. There were some issues with some, some issues. And so that helped, but the time that you did have the the prior arrangement, I think that's what Mr. Staba was referring to. There was a span of time here where you had. So they've been monitoring that and other equipment. The the units that are there that didn't crack and fail do not appear to be having the same issues. And otherwise, he wouldn't. He's, you know, he's pretty good about putting, he's very good in every way, but about putting things on that he feels like needs to be on there. That's why those weren't on there because they appear to be functioning and they don't appear to be having any issues. But the reality is you can there's about fifty things right now. That if we had the money to magically replace them, you know, you probably would because you don't know, you know, they hit the twenty-year mark or whatever. But when they're functioning well and they look like they have a certain amount of longevity, like our football field, and then we got that rated. And the good news behind the football field is it rated better. So you don't have to make the expenditure now on that field. These are seven to nine. You don't have to make that replacement for those now.
How do we start seeing that? Because your football field is a great example, and I think this this ties in as well. We really don't see them until all of a sudden it's a, hey, we're going to have to redo the football field and have paid for it. Remember, we came all of a sudden, the the battle rhythm got high. This, I completely understand what you're saying as far as the failure mechanism and the the need to repair or replace it, but I think your staff is completely on it. It just makes me curious about, as you said, that other fifty things. What are we tracking for twenty twenty-five?
Well, so my rudimentary quick answer to that would be your capital process does have most of that in. So your, your, your field was in there. And I think what we got into was whose responsibility is what piece, that's what needed to get resolved. But you do have, and now, you know, working with Ms. Griffin, we have, we're talking about it as early as early August is the first run through. So, you know, we've had in this particular case, you know, when you're talking about capital next, you've had a a good view of a couple of these, and you've seen how they changed and changes as grants become a little all that. But in any case, going back to this, you know, I think it's just a matter of people's good intentions that there's an option here versus, you know, maybe a less.
And I don't want to, I don't want to come across it and arguing the the good intention. I just, I I'm trying to make sure I've got my order after the lesson that we can look from this six minutes and then so we can look forward.
I don't know whether to end up first Christina or you Jacob. I'll I'll go with Jacob and then Christina.
So the insurance point, like, what is the amount that you consider sufficient enough to take the higher rates?
Well, I don't know that amount. You know, I would say that I think if you can avoid something hitting your insurance. Yeah, if something hits your insurance, you tend to, in my labor's experience, you tend to pay higher rates later. If you can avoid it, and it, and there's a method of avoiding it that has been established. So for instance, the way I look at it, again, to bring it to a layperson's perspective, is I put away money for the car rate, you know, every month. I have very old cars. One of them's two hundred and two thousand miles, the other one's eighty-seven, the other one's a hundred thousand, right? I don't want one with a good power right now, but I have that. You know, and when it breaks down or something happens, I'll take from that fund before I'll go to my insurance for something. Windshield, something like that, because I don't want to pay a higher rate over time. In my opinion, they get it back plus some. And so I think that there are times when, if you have an option, and I look at the UISF fund, that was a, you know, going back to Steve Wobner's time, that was a smart move. And what you have is this fund that is sitting there available and for things like this. And if that option can be used, and you can use it instead of drawing on your insurance, you know, using labor as an example, I don't replace the, you know, windshield, buy it rather than using insurance, then you don't have to succumb to greater rates for this one. You never know what's down the road. So if you take it on this, and then the glycol system blows up and there's leaks and then comes down, and you take it on that, and you take it on the next thing, you're just, it's compounding potential impact. So where you can avoid it, it may be worth considering.
Eighty-five thousand, it's not, it's not a small number, you know, so I'm not sure what the
My kid bought my car for eighty-five thousand.
Well, you're taking a institutional, we're using a first example applying to an institutional standard, but it's similar.
It's still not like a small number. I mean, if it was, I don't think we'd have the competition at our, at this level. So I I'm just curious what the what the map looks like for that. And then the second thing was, Mr. The Council voted on it last night, so I think this is the first time we kind of really dealt with the use of fund in this way, so what what really are we voting on here? Is it, do we have like a choice? I know the town council voted yes. Can we say no, or is this?
But you can. I mean, you can, you can say, thanks, but no, thanks. However, it is the board's money. You are actually using, there is an allocation that filters down to the town side and the board side. This is the board's UISF fund. So there's, it's in your your space. What you're doing is you're allocating an amount that was already going to go to filters to this because it's the fastest way or easiest way for that counting. From the town, but the motion here is basically, I didn't anticipate that happening in the sequence it happened when this was all being put together in the timeline and being put together. I thought maybe you were going to do this and then, but understandably, they're the feeling of getting it there sooner so that the capital process could play out also makes sense because you need to know if you don't have the approval for that, you'll have to either ask, what to add it to our capital plan or go through insurance.
Okay, I'm just curious, never, never really dealt with it this way. I'll let this go, so sit patient over there.
Thanks, guys. My, I got two questions. I just, in my gut, I feel like it could potentially be more cost effective to replace it instead of repairing it. Um, I haven't had that much time to review any of this. I've just been the timing of the information. So could we use the use of to funds to replace the boiler instead of repair it?
My understanding is you could. It's a I don't know the specific balance. At the end of twenty twenty-one, you had two sixty-three. I know you have the eighty-five because it's already allocated. But you could use the use of fund for a full replacement. It's just that that isn't what was right, recommended or approved last night. But but to you answer your question, yes, you can use use of to replace something as well.
Okay. And then my second question, whether we service it or replace it. We got estimates. Are we going to bid publicly for this service?
If you're repairing it, and he's got estimates for the repair, he would follow the protocols that are necessary.
So the decision has been made on what vendor to use? Pretty much.
Now, right now, we have, we have quotes, but I mean, I can go back and find, yeah, I can go back and look at. One, well, they replace one eighty-eight to two oh seven, and the repairs about this.
That's all I had. Thank you.
Ms. Griffin? Okay, so that was my question. So we have two hundred and sixty-three in the use.
Well, as of the last document I saw, which is twenty twenty-one, I I don't know that, I was looking for an updated one. Sure that it's somewhere, but I don't, I didn't have access to it right away. So, you know, I know that we have the eighty-five because it was earmarked for already filtration piece.
I think it would be important to know what's in there. And that is our money, for lack of a better way to put it, that is Board of Ed designated funds.
Yeah, the, the document I had to give you an example had something that the boards was like two sixty, that two sixty-three something. That is the board's UISF account.
Okay, so that's our, it's our money technically. But we have to request being able to use it for certain things. Is that how that works? Kind of like probably relief fund and ERF and all this other fun stuff. Okay, and doing it this way, we were trying to avoid basically expensing this eighty, eighty-five thousand dollars out of our budget. So this was kind of the option. If the eighty-five thousand hit our budget, we could, we could do it out of this because it falls under the use of.
Yeah, I mean, originally, it was a huge repair, you know, repair that insurance, you know, would be looked at or covered, but then use of was brought up. And yes, essentially, then you take it out of something that you're already contributing to. For a rainy day purpose like this.
So if we repair it, how many years would we get above say boilers one and two?
Well, my understanding of the the paradigm of the repair is that it'll be more in alignment with the the life of the other ones because they were in, put in the same time.
Okay, so it doesn't get us really anymore.
Yeah, you're not.
Gets us back to where we started.
My understanding is it puts it right back about in the same span of space as the seven to nine years. Then, when you are replacing all of them, you're replacing them with the same models and units and whatever are available at that time. It doesn't require any additional engineering. It would be three times the costs, you know, right now, et cetera.
And I, I wasn't on the meeting last night. I didn't know that they were talking about this. What was the reasoning for the two people who voted no then? Why did they not want to use the use of money? Did they give explanations?
Yeah, the, I put it in the document.
Oh, sorry.
No, 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 don't be. It's fine. I think the two during the process when it comes basically, it was, why was this being presented now, only now if the problems were experienced in October twenty twenty-one? And and thoughts about same thing that was brought up about replacement versus repair. I think there was a feeling that, you know, just replace it. And then the other feeling was just, I mean, like, why? This wasn't a the way of doing it. That's my read on why. You'd have to actually ask the people who voted, but that's mine.
Okay, I'll definitely read those. I have to say that I am kind of in agreement with Christina. I think we need to look at replacing it. I think eighty-five thousand dollars for a repair that doesn't extend the useful life of it. I, I just, that would be my thought. I think at this time, I I would like to see us look into replacement. And I would actually like to see if this could fall under any of the ARPA money from the town, what they get from the dollars. I'd love to know if, if any of that could be a possibility for, for something like this since it was I don't want to say it's a surprise because we've known about it for a year, but if it's something that we might be able to get funding through that because, I mean, I think the, I don't know what the final decisions have been for the ARPA money, but I know they've moved stuff out of their capital budget to pay for stuff with the ARPA money, so it'd be nice if we could work together and maybe come to that. So that would be my my hesitation on, it's not necessarily using the use of money, it's using the use of money for the repair. I would like to see us look into using it for replacement. If replacement's going to get us another twenty years out of it, I'm not really sure what a boiler would be, but that, that would just be my thought. I feel like the eighty-five is just a Band-Aid. And in seven years, that Band-Aid's going to fall off, and we're going to kind of be right back where we started. So why not look into funding replacement?
Would you want to fund the replacement out of the use of money?
If it's a possibility, sure, why not? Like I said, if I'm understanding the use of correctly, that that's people always say our money, their money, but if it is Board of Ed earmark money, and this is the right, you know, thing that falls under what it can be used for, then sure, I would think that we would want to look into that.
I thought, reading the narrative that came out earlier, I thought the issue with replace over repair was that it was going to take over four months to replace, which takes us now out of this season where we're concerned about if one of the other, if there's a problem with the other boilers, school having to shut down, whereas we can get a repair done within four weeks.
Right, and naturally, the questions that come up around it are that. And so that, one of, one of the reasons listed here was that yeah, it's four weeks versus four months, and and the uncertainty of even those four months, it took a long time to even get where we are. The the manufacturing units and their availability. The, you know, obviously, you have some good ones, they have seven to nine, but what if, you know, if one of them goes, that could be potentially issue prone. Same thing like your tire, you put a, you know, you put a small tire on there. Thank you. You put the donut on, you know, you can only go fifty thousand miles an hour for a certain amount of time, for a certain number of, you know, miles. So I think that's the feeling is that, you know, well, if if it's going to cause issues, maybe when you go to replace the other ones, you know, maybe cost effective or more cost effective to do them all at once. There may be engineering issues, if that's not the case. And it's four weeks versus potentially four months. Get it done for a third of the cost, make it extend for about the same time as the other ones go, seven to nine. Those were the thoughts. But understandably, you know, that question comes up. Those are the answers to this kind of. Those were the thoughts, but understandably, you know, that question comes up, those are the answers to this kind of question.
Yes, I was just making sure that's all thing was done. Um, I would just say, I just still have a really hard time in using our eighty five thousand of our USF money if. Another boiler could go and or this one could go, if something else happens, I just have a hard time using our savings account for a repair. When I feel like if it's a repair, we should be using our operating funds, we should be using our savings account for actual. Replacement, that's just the way I feel. Jen, do you have anything more?
No, no.
And Dana?
Thank you. Dr. Will, uh, did you see how many quotes or estimates we have, there's two?
There's two.
One, just two from two different companies, or we have a repair, so we have a repair?
No, there's two different companies.
Two different companies with a repair and replace, okay. So we have a few of those, so, and then if we needed to, we could get. More votes as well.
Yeah.
If it, if it's.
I mean, yeah, I would imagine, it's just the companies, you know, you've got two solid companies, they're, yeah.
Yeah, no, I understand. Uh, now, so like, what is, I mean, other than Pete and his team. What is our yearly maintenance plan on these things, like I know we have, you know, main, our maintenance team coming through there. But they're like, I have God here come in and go through my stuff every once a year to make sure. Obviously, there's things behind that you don't necessarily see. Um, do we have a yearly maintenance plan with an outside vendor?
That they he uses.
He is.
They they come in.
He uses that one. Yeah, that's.
So, um, they they come in and do the regular maintenance and checks.
Yeah, and they're very reputable, they're.
Absolutely, that's why he had confidence enough not. If Pete was worried, these would be in your capital requests, you know, right away, it's just that. You know, this process plays out as it does, you know, your options of insurance, USF or otherwise are out there and and ultimately. There were reasons why there was, uh, the replacement wasn't sought for this right now. The town didn't offer, um, other, when the conversations occurred, UISF came up. ARPA didn't, although ARPA came up that night, it didn't seem like that was leaked upon. That doesn't mean that maybe it wouldn't be, but it seems like, you know, what came up was, hey, how about USF? Instead of, hey, how about, you know, something else?
Um, and the overall recommendation from New England Mechanical and MZR, M4, and the other vendor. I know that they quoted us both repair and replace, but what was their professional recommendation? And the reason why I ask that is because, of course, you know. If you're anything like my husband, who wants to always have a newer car for the warranty, he's taking care of all the stuff, when you have a lot of car that gets older, then you're paying a lot of out of pocket costs and repair. Um, but did they, did they give you, uh, repeat whomever their professional recommendation?
Well, I think he, in in the way he talked about it reflected the information he had been receiving, for instance. He wouldn't say that he thinks seven to nine years if it, if they were saying this thing is done, this thing is gone.
Right.
Uh, so I think that's where he got, he gets his information from them and that was reflected in him not putting it in capital. Not doing, you know, not originally asking for a replacement, um, that type of thing. I also think that, again, check the minutes, talk to these individuals yourself, but I think there was a concern about taking too much from this. That taking the the, you know, sixty plus controls, which is the eighty five, was taking a certain amount from USF, but taking two hundred USF. That might be a lot when you have energy impacts money. That there's going to be some changes in energy costs in the future. And that maybe taking the repair amount now might be better than. As some people use the term, I wasn't crazy about it, rating, you know, you're rating it right now for two hundred, it might be taking too much. So I think, and again, I am, I'm, that's my take on what they were saying. And no criticism for the word rating, it certainly gives the, you know, the idea of the purpose, but I would, you know.
And I guess, I guess my concern is it's a catch twenty two, right? Yeah, I mean, you're eighty five thousand dollar repair, that's expensive, I mean, that's a big ticket to pay. And, you know, the two hundred and seven or one, one eighty, two hundred and seven. But I guess my concern, and I think before COVID, I would say it's a slam dunk, let's replace it, let's move forward, blah, blah. And being in this industry of HVAC. I've seen, I see where things, we would order stuff for our business and even my next door neighbor's business. They are waiting a year for a part, they had to shut down half of their business because they couldn't. Get that replacement, that piece to be replaced. So it, they had to repair the thing, then there's, then I guess I get concerned about the delays on parts and replacements. Let alone, I mean, parts, let alone the replacement. Um, you know, we ordered stuff last winter, I got it in the spring. I ordered stuff in the spring for summer, new equipment and new things, and I got it recently. Like I literally just got, I mean, air conditioners and it's going into heat, so, I mean, my company would love to. I'm being sarcastic because this is a, this is a cash cow, right? If it goes, if we lose our heating in that school, we have to heat the school for those kids to be in there. And four plus months, and I hate to say it this way, but I don't trust those four plus months to replace. Um, not with, not with COVID, not with supply chain, not with any of this stuff. And I, you know, I even, but again, conversely, saying the same thing, I get scared for parts to repair. So, um, it's the catch twenty two, but I read, and I, and I get the timing, excuse me. I get the timing situation because it was just put in front of the council, I, you know, I I feel horribly for you and Pete. For someone advising you that that was what the best thing to do is because it's almost like you walk into a situation where it's like down the streets, right? So it must have been a tough situation overall, and it's tough, like Jacob said, we're doing reverse, this is reverse, we haven't engaged in this USF. Backwards with the town council during that, but I guess I'm talking myself in circles. But I I honestly, I get very nervous with supply chain right now. And that four or five months to replace it. Very nervous, and then I get nervous with our shutting down the schools or, God forbid, having to outsource heat to come in. And you're paying tens of thousands of dollars for rental equipment to heat your high school because we don't have. The unit, yeah, the boiler. And looking at that boiler, that's not, that's not a fun piece of equipment to repair. And I will say, New England Mechanical, they're the whole package, I mean, I don't know who else, I mean, I know they run our other thing. But, um, they're electric, they're electricians, they're plumbers, they're mechanical contractors, so they're bringing the whole team of that, so. I, that's why I was asking what their end all advice would be, but I just get really scared of supply chain with this.
Well, that has been a struggle, that has created lots of frustration and craziness.
Yeah.
You know, from components and parts to fully constructed items. Um, as you were talking, this is what I was searching for, that's the most current thing that I have at the moment. As of June twentieth, uh, board's balance is three hundred and ninety eight and twenty five. Now, again, that that may not be the most recent, but that's, that's roughly.
They took the whole two hundred from the honeymoon settlement on their side.
So anyway.
Where's that thing?
So this information.
That would pay for our boiler.
So that's, uh, but that's to answer that question, you know, you're eighty five out of potentially four hundred in the three ninety eight.
Well, I've listened to everybody's comments and and I think everyone's made some really awesome points, but I'm with Dana in that the. The need for the repair is there because of just the winter season. And, I mean, we are kind of between a rock and a hard place, we've got to repair it, we've got to get it going and make it functional, and I think. Um, that we've already have the approval, it just makes sense to me to, and I would be in favor of just repairing it this time, I think it's risky to not do so. And I do think, Griffin, you've got a great point about replacing it because it is a big ticket item, but I just think it's risky and I also. Think like what you had said about COVID, we don't know what's coming down the road, we may need those funds for something else that we can't even predict. Does anyone else have any brief comments? Jaden, I would go to Jaden next because Tony, you already.
I can answer Dr. Will's question, Dr. Will, when I was in, I want to say it was seventh grade, I think that was around the time, I think you might have just made. The jump to your your current position, uh, but in the middle school, there was an HVAC system, I think, being installed. Um, that year, something along.
Yeah, geothermal.
Yeah, the geothermal, so, so there's, there were systems being installed and whatnot. Um, and I, I, one memory I have of that was there were so many issues with. With fluctuating temperature, that it became an issue, I mean, of every day of every week for. For the end of the school year, I think. Um, and so, but my my question is, could you foresee that same sort of. Reaction coming from if we just full on replace it versus if we, you know, get by with the repair for now?
Yeah, well, to to connect to your memory of it, um, that project didn't cover the places that, um, need to be covered now under the conversation we're having. For, so, um, I think most of the fluctuations you experienced had to do with the presets that were required under the honey, honeywell. So if you were in Ms. Cassidy's room that was hit, getting hit with direct sunlight, you could put that thing as low, you know, to the lowest point of the set point, you were still pushing close to eighty. But if you were somewhere tucked in the corner, you know, on this, on the first floor, you you'd be almost cold, and so even with that, you'd, you'd have some fluctuations from injury. Um, but I do think, you know, in a case like this, you're talking about a heating, you know, this heats the building. And it's that, you know, in a way, it's sort of the backup, the backups complete, get, get the backup going.
Thank you. Bruce.
Yes.
I just want to say, you know, after, after sitting thinking about it, that those boilers, all three of them are, are system. You know, and I, I think. When we look at replacing, we're going to want to replace all three of them. I'm not a fan of having a one off unit sitting in the middle, be it for the utilities coming in, but also for the controls, I know that we're talking about it. It's going to be difficult to try to balance that. The primary thing is knowing that in six or seven years, we've got six or seven years of state requirements that are going to come. As we are seeing now, they've got no problem changing our environmental requirements. Uh, so if we repair this one, we get ourselves the the extra capacity at least for six years. Then we can go in, we can switch that whole system out, we can plan for, we can put something in. That's make more environmentally friendly, that's more control friendly, what we can do it as a whole, rather than having to find something that fits. We're, 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 so, uh, they prepare, so we have a better option.
I'm just wondering, so if I remember reading correctly, this broke last August, August twenty twenty one? Or did I read?
Um, yeah, there's, uh, there's a document on or dashboard that kind of gives the full chronology, but that. In, uh, October eighteenth, somewhere in the zone of the eighteenth to the twenty second, they started to experience problems with this boiler. And they troubles, you know, brought in and tried to figure out what was going on from October to November, it was shut down. They inspected it, they removed the insulation, they removed the exterior covering, um, and it was determined that it had cracks. So then from December to August, they were trying to get the quotes and all that.
Okay, no, I was just wondering what it, so we got through a winter with two boilers. And I know the argument is, you know, if one, another one breaks, then you'd have to shut the school down, but we've already gone through a winter. I don't know, I think we may have time to look at it, another boiler, but Tony made a valid argument, he may have changed my mind, uh, on the repair, so. I was just throwing that out there. I'm all set, thanks, Sophia.
Griffin, my only last thing would be, if we're going to go with this eighty five thousand dollar repair. If boiler one, if the same thing happens, then I get what you're saying, but I don't think we do another eighty five thousand dollar repair at some point, I think we just need to be. Aware of the fact that we might at some point have one boiler that's mismatched. And I'm not an HVAC person or an engineer, I don't know if that throws everything off.
I don't think we have seven years.
For the other two boilers?
I understand, I understand what Pete's saying, I also understand, you know, like the, you've got your preventative company that comes in. But your boiler developed cracks. Uh, my confidence that if we were to strip away all the insulation on the other two, we wouldn't start seeing similar things as well. Whatever's happening is happening across.
But is this that way, if we put the capital budget, do we put a boiler out in fiscal twenty eight? Yeah, just to have it on there.
Good idea.
We need to be, we need to be talking about it, we can't let it speak up on us.
No, we need to be proactive. Thank you, sorry. Well, um, I think if there isn't any more discussion, perhaps we could have a motion.
Could do that.
Yes, my motion paper.
Uh, move to support the reallocation of the USF funds earmarked for filtration to boiler control repair installation.
Second.
Okay. Let's all vote, including Ms. Ford.
Hi.
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 I'm a name.
With, I don't know how many eyes in one name. And, um, okay. So we can move on to the Birch Grove primary closeout.
All right, so I'm going to give you a kind of run up narrative here, I do see that, uh, Ms. Murray is in the audience, so she also is a great resource. For questions about status, but, um, as the BGP project comes to an end here. Uh, the construction closeout process requires the BOE to accept the project as complete. Um, so the minutes of a favorable motion are sent to the Department of Administrative Services along with a completed EDO forty nine. Now, the EDO forty nine used to be a piece of paper, now it's an electronic submission. So we get board approval, then we make the electronic submission. But I do have a paper copy of a, you know, what that looks like generally, but it is not done on paper. So what I would show you tonight is is a paper version of what is actually electronic. The project, um, can be moved to closeout status after the contractor has been paid in full. The final payment has been made to the contractor to model construction on June thirtieth in the amount ninety thousand, one hundred and eleven seventy two, check number seven, six seventy three, nine forty four. Payments in full have been made to the architect, furniture and fixture vendors, testing labs, project consultant, there's no outstanding invoices or payments requested for this. All of the financial records, executed contracts, minutes of the project and other correlating documentation are available at the town hall. So there is a motion requested of the board to approve the completion and closeout status to Birch Grove Primary. Uh, construction project one forty two dash zero zero eight three, and, uh, what I did do is for the board, um, any references that, um, Ms. Murray, they make. Um, I put all of these relevant documents, in case you want to look over them. The one I made reference to, this is roughly the figures that will be put into the oh, you know, oh forty nine. Form, you kind of see that, the, again, no longer done on paper, but this is what that looks like. And so you have access to these and I I hand the floor back to, uh, Shayk, I mean, I want to, it's Ms. Murray.
Yes, Ms. Murray, do you have anything you'd like to, um, inform the board about this topic?
No, I, um, I hope that, uh, you guys knew this was coming, um, you know, the school's been in use for over a year now. Uh, and really, the reason it takes so long to get from students being in the building to tonight. Is, uh, it's it's paperwork, um, and I would, uh, reach, I would give a shout out and a thank you. To Pete Staba on the board side and Bev Bellaty on the town side, uh, for the. Amazing amount of paperwork involved in this project, uh, but as Dr. Will it summarized, you know. Uh, all, uh, bills have been received, reviewed, approved by, um, everyone and paid. Um, and at this point, we need to close out the project so that the last holdback that the state makes. Um, and I think it's about eight million dollars, um, can be paid to the town, uh, to kind of balance our. Books on this project, so, uh, this is a procedural thing more than anything else. My understanding is this is, uh, this project went very smoothly. I think, uh, last time I had to close out a project, it involved lawsuits and stuff, so, uh, this is, this is going really well. Um, and I I'm happy to answer any questions, but I'm very excited to see this project reach its completion.
Awesome, does anybody have any questions or discussion for? Either Ms. Murray or Dr. Will, regarding this closeout?
Either Ms. Murray or Dr. Willett regarding this closeout?
I just want to thank, you know, Katie, Murray and Joe Mateus as a chair and co-chair, you know, of, of the committee. It was a lot of. Work, not just in the committee meetings, but like beyond the face that. Um, I mean, this is a lot of the talent paying stuff, you know, reimbursement, like you said, a lot of paperwork and. But the entire, the entire committee of, you know, bipartisan committee really worked very well together. Some said, there was a. Intentsious conversations, but that's what brought us to the beautiful school that we have to house our students. Um, and I'm excited, you know, I mean, just as excited as we were that first day of opening school last year with Mr. Swanson. And this could be adding those kids going into those buildings and not being in those boilers. And then continuing, you know, this year, I think this is, you know. We miss being at Birch Grove, our family, but uh, just a fantastic job, Katie, to you and, and the leadership on that, so I appreciate that.
I agree. Thank you to everybody who's involved. Yeah, a lot of work. Okay, are we ready to have our motion?
Um, I'll move to approve the completion and closeout status of Birch Grove Primary Construction Project. One forty two dash zero zero eight three N.
Okay, let's vote. Alright, we can move on to the capital budget.
Okay, so um, you did see as we kind of. Went from August to now, FFC looked at it twice, we had to look at it in twenty days. Um, I put this document together in an attempt to give you sort of a rundown of, of, you know. Each of the steps here and then ultimately. Um, kind of where it landed. Based on, this is the thing with Google, and plus making it minus. But you have access to the document, so you can blow it up, people can actually expand this when you put it out there. Um, but the adjustments made here, you can see that these are Mr. Holt's, you know, this would be where um, these two items. There, I think it was ultimately the, I keep calling it the artillery, the articulating lift. Cafeteria tables, this is twenty twenty eight. And Ms. Griffin had that moved out to um, you know, to the whoa. An opportunity arises. It's not like, whoa, that's so expensive. It, whoa, when opportunity arises. Um, and so, you know, I just let, I had to have it somewhere total, but I wanted to represent what the two perspectives were on that. So it totals over here in the whoa, but it, it also is place held here, should the board want to do that. So those were um, you know, two of the other things. I did also sort this by uh, by. Priority. So as was requested, you see that the high and then the medium, as you noted, there's really, there's no low. But there is um, there is the medium whoa. Um, and then there's the high early years and the high, you know, later years, the medium earlier years, medium later years. So you can almost see the priority in terms of, you know, generalized medium, high, low. You can also see where it falls in the sequence of years, which does talk to a little bit of the priority, but it also talks to sequence of. When things can be executed. Um, that's generally how that's looked at. From a financing and facilities perspective is sometimes some things can't be executed all at the same time. It just isn't enough resources, time or people. Um, the other piece is what I tried to keep here is the town mods, the blue. I couldn't do everything in one, one pager. So this is the sequence of the priority. It is the category of funding. And it's reflecting the changes that you mentioned. The blue is some town modification of where that fell. So the blues are things that are funded, but were touched by the. And uh, and the year comes straight down to the bottom. But I couldn't also show where those prior position was without making it even more complicated again. So this was just. You know, that's what the town touched, that's where it fell for years, here's the categories these are in, and then here's the prioritization. That's shot and getting it one page and reflecting the changes.
You guys are fast.
So I like, I like uh, Tony and Christine's suggestion, putting those two up in W O A. Couple of questions. So one was earlier in the meeting, when you talked about the, the grant for the HVAC system. And I think you had mentioned because funded through that way, taking it off the capital. Um, budget, did I hear that correctly? Cause I think it fell on there.
Yeah, what'll happen is it'll shift to the funding mechanism would be different.
Okay. But is the purple code then?
You might want to put that somewhere like in the.
The purple is. It's actually the pink, right? It's pink, pink is the new. I have very, you know, standard.
Okay, and then. So we were keeping it on, we're just changing the color code. Okay, and then the, the second thing was. I know Ashley brought this up last meeting with the, the man trap and the radios. Um, and taking those out of this budget and funding the year, the E R F. I, I just wanted to bring that up again, cause I'm not sure where we landed on that as board. I think personally, I think if they're put in high priority. Um, and if we communicate properly, I think they thought it would fund, but I think the case is pretty convincing with that, but I'm. Interested to see if anybody other thoughts about that.
I just. Oh, yes. I think I was the one who brought it up. And that was only, I think, if they denied it.
Yeah.
That, that was kind of a fallback for us.
Okay.
They're important for us, but if they, for whatever reason, don't. Cause I think the issue with that was more, we wanted to do it sooner rather than later. So if. They say yes, but they want to put it into a bond, that's not going to be done until twenty twenty five, we don't really want to wait. But yeah, there was a way to articulate to them that those were really important and we'd like to somehow see those be done. In twenty twenty four.
Yeah.
Really twenty twenty three, but I don't think we can actually move on to twenty twenty three. You know, I'd like to, but um, so anyway, I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense. I, I'd be angry with that. That's a great segue in a conversation about everything being high. Uh, so that's a discussion for next year, but. That's all I have.
Uh, this one clarification, basically what you said, I am not a fan of putting those in the whoa. Uh, and I think Dr. Willett has it articulated up there. Uh, in my mind, the whoa is, you know, when opportunity arises. Suggests that if you have the additional funding or the opportunity, those projects could be done as early as twenty twenty three or twenty twenty four. You know, it, it's kind of that grab bag to spend the funding and the resources. Those projects, uh, for example, the articulating lift. I think are low, low priority. Such that we don't want to fund them at the earliest opportunity. We want to kick them out. And fund them later at some other point, uh, which is why if you look at Dr. Willett's chart here. Uh, my recommendation was putting them out there at twenty twenty eight. Uh, along with the tables, which, you know, that far out essentially just says we're, we're tracking it. But we have no plans on funding it. I think we kick it out to that list.
That, that makes, that makes sense to me. I'd be comfortable with that either way. And I just kind of see like. Those two are related, but I think I see them just slightly differently. Um, just for context, I think like the lift is something that. I'd like to cooperate with the town on for reasons that I think we've covered in the past. Uh, the tables, um, I, I would, I see those as a true low priority as in, they will need to be replaced at some point. They will be twenty years old at that point. Um, but does it endanger students or is it like a, it's not a real impediment to learning? No.
And when we start to look and, you know, nothing is, I think you did a wonderful job trying to herd cats. And say everything on that one piece of paper. Uh, but when we really step back and today's a great time to, you know, to have that conversation. But look at all the capital discussions we've said just today. That, that aren't articulated on here. Um, we've got three or four different conversation threads that are linked. So when we start saying, hey. Six years from now, we've got three boilers to replace. We've got HVAC system within the middle school and T I S that are going to be, to be done. We've got the fields, we've got all of these things that looking at from a preventative basis to trying to figure out where they go from here. Things such as the articulating lifts and the, you know, the, the other one that we have down there in the low. To the Dr. Will's point earlier, we've got to figure out if it's actually a need or if it's something that there's another way of doing. Um, we, we're just not going to have the funding to do even medium priorities.
Anyone else?
I'm actually fine. I think Tony had convinced me last meeting to move the two things over to twenty eight. So if everybody's in agreement with that, I, I completely understand where you're coming from. I think that would be a good idea. I would like to now, after our boiler discussion, I think there should be a line item in there for boilers. I guess I would say two oh seven. The high end times three. Um, I think we should put it in there so that the town. I think you probably know it's coming, but just to kind of put it on the radar. And then my only other questions, Dr. Willett, and the bus stop paving, the T I S window glass replacement in the district. Wireless access points are kind of these yellow. In the first two columns. Where did those land last year? Cause those were all on last year's um. Spreadsheet, correct?
Uh, I can pull up last year if you want.
I'm just like, do we.
Would have been changed. I think yellow is probably where they were.
They were approved at some point, maybe even like the year before then.
Yeah, that has twenty two and twenty three, that is last and this year, you know, approved last year, approved for this year would have been approved. Last year and the year prior would have been twenty two, you know what I mean?
Right.
This, this is a five year plan, but really what you're looking at is these five here, the other extremities just kind of give you reference for what happened.
Okay.
This is more of a what happened kind of thing. Um, but I can pull up the last year's two if you want.
No, that's okay. I just wasn't sure. Like, I know the blue. Was all what was approved last year.
Could have been. Moved around a little.
Okay.
That's what the blue, the yellow, I think is what stayed put. It still was approved.
My only other suggestion, if you just throw down a little bit. Um, I don't want the town to forget. You know, where you have the town modifications on the blue, can we put town modification slash previously approved? In the twenty two, twenty three capital budget? Just, I would say something like that so that they know that, hey, you've already said yes to this, so really, don't even, don't even look at these. You've already. But, but other than that, I thought that. You all know I'm big on my one pager, but I thought that this definitely was a little bit more clear to follow. Although maybe it's just because I've looked at it so much, but. So thank you for, for putting these changes though.
Just, uh, I want to make sure I'm following. So uh, we're moving the articulating lift cap tables to FY twenty twenty eight, as Mr. Holt suggested. The blue we're changing, adding to, you know, town mod, town approved, right? What was the other? There was something else?
I think we should add in the boiler.
Add the boiler in, in this. Times three.
Should it be medium or high? I don't, I don't.
I think you're gonna have to be medium.
Any other discussion or questions?
So the one showing one point two five five million, is that the accurate number if we do the grant or is it?
No, the grant, I think in the language somewhere north of this is one point five.
Five, yeah, okay. How should that be?
I don't think you can yet. In, until the grant is given to us, we need to budget for the expense.
Okay. That's fine.
So what this could be is motion for the capital budget in twenty two to twenty eight with the changes made in the meeting of. October twelfth and authorize superintendent convey it. I'll make those changes tonight, Saturday to tomorrow.
Uh, I'm moving to approve the BOE capital budget request for fiscal year twenty three through fiscal year twenty eight. And authorize the superintendent to provide it to the town manager for reconsideration.
Okay, let's vote. And now we can uh, circle back to our L six indoor air quality grant.
Back here again.
Yes. Yeah.
Uh, move to, uh, I move to support the district action to apply for the indoor air quality grant and request of the town council. Approve an appropriation amount of one point five million dollars in anticipation of a forty nine point six four percent grant reimbursement.
Any, any more discussion on this?
One quick question.
Sure.
Dr. Willett, that forty nine point six four, is that a set percentage or is it a graduated type?
Well, it's decided, it's for this town, so you may not get the same somewhere else.
Okay, so if we were.
Collins rate.
If we were Windsor, it'd be a different number potentially, I don't know what their numbers, but yes, yes.
Any other discussion? Okay, let's vote.
I'm gonna abstain just because I wasn't here for the beginning of the meeting.
That passes. Good job, everybody. Great work. Okay, now we can move on to public participation. And comments are limited to items that are featured on this agenda. Do we have anybody that would like to? Participate? I'm, I'm, I'm here to just uh, watch, take enjoying. I did enjoy the open house last week at the middle school. That was great, it was great. I'm just starting there, so. Okay, well. Yeah, I don't see anybody um, online, so I think we can close that out. Um, anybody have some points of information?
Just a quick captain, the Birch Grove um, instructional rounds, is that date set and do we have a time?
Twenty seventh, it's gonna be from not roughly nine to noon or one.
Okay, till what?
Twenty seventh, yeah. You know, the thing is, we're gonna try to figure out the perfect arrival time, because if you come straight at nine, you're in every bus. So we're gonna give you a, find the, tries to total that, but that range is definitely, that way we'll be right with us.
Better be on time. Uh, Tony?
Um, I just want to, uh, my thanks to Ms. Griffin as far as the capital budget. Uh, this is the first time that we've done this, where we've looked at it multiple times and really kind of worked it and adjusted it. There was a lot of conversation in, in FFC. Griffin as the chair and with Dr. Willett, all the work that went into it. Uh, I think for the first time, you know, sat down on the board, I'm happy with what we're presenting. I think we're giving a good product that we can stand behind. Oh, that's a hard work, both of you, so thank you.
I know I mentioned it, we were talking about the healthy food, um, but I just, you know, wanted to. You know, say that it's a fantastic school system that we're involved in, that afforded the opportunity for this young student, Henry. Uh, the fourth grader to come to the administration and be brave to say, hey, I would really like some food on my menu. That my peers and I can eat, you know, but instead of bringing lunch from home. And I, you know, from what I understand that they welcome, that lunch services and uh, Mr. Janine and Ms. Barrett and the team. Really worked with him to get something that was realistic on the menu. And that just shows um, what educators are doing to provide our children or students. With this empowerment to do it. So I, I think that was just a fantastic. Situation. I know I briefly talked about it earlier, but, you know, I just can't say enough about. You know, how we're educating our students and what this student was able to accomplish with the support of the staff.
Cause we need him. If we do a little acknowledgement, I'd thank him for.
You could.
Having the guts.
I mean, you hit that, we have acknowledgements.
Yeah, I think that would be fantastic.
Takes a lot for a grown person to.
Right, yeah, great.
Yeah, yeah, good idea.
Quick question, did that change i- in the, um, um, intermediate school or all schools now?
So I know with that T I S, I would assume T I S and Birch Grove, I know that they don't have the same things every day, but they do have similar menus, so I. I don't want to say, you know, I can get back to you on that, but, um.
It didn't take away my cheese pizza.
Does anyone have anything else for points of information? Okay, well. I think we can entertain a motion to adjourn, so.
Second.
Okay, let's vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. It was a wonderful meeting.